I want to welcome all of you to the Mayland Planning Commission meeting tonight. I would ask that you all please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to thank you, God, for all that you've done for us. We thank you for allowing us to assemble in this place one more time. We ask, oh God, that you would give us the guidance and the wisdom that we need to go through this meeting and make the proper decisions. We ask, oh Heavenly Father, that you will continue to bless this commission, continue to bless our city and our nation, and we ask, oh God, that you would lead us and guide us in everything that we do. Let the words of our mouth and the meditations of our heart always be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, our strength and our Redeemer, in Jesus's name. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to go over the meeting procedures. The planning staff presents the application request to the Planning Commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinances and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the Planning Commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make presentations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans. Public comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Are there any Planning Commission announcements? Okay, thank you. All right. And do you have something you want to say? The first order of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held April 5th, 2022, subject to any necessary corrections. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor? There's no opposition, so we have approved the minutes. Okay, the first item on our agenda is for public comment, site plan approval is SP-4966, access medical offices. Consider the site plan for a medical office at 140 Palmer Drive, parcel 02-00760. The property is in a planned development district, ZM 2007-044, Brandon Arden, Arden Construction Incorporated, applicant for Skip Carter, AMC Georgia Properties LLC, owner.
Good evening. Christopher Carey with Glen County Planning and Zoning. Please consider site plan for medical office at the corner of Martin Palmer and Highway 17, parcel number 0200760. The site will consist of a 1,317 square foot medical office building. The applicant is also requesting a waiver to the inter parcel connectivity requirement in 614.5 due to the applicant not having plans to expand the site further. Right here is the site. Here is the site plan. Here are the current elevations. And your possible actions. Staff does recommend approval of SP-4966, and I do have Tony Widener here, who was the drawer for the application.
Mr. White, would you like to come up and speak?
No, we concur with the recommendations for approval. Ready to get started on the project. It could be a good fit for the community.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, this is a public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of SP-4966? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Did I say in opposition? So is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of SP-4966? Did I just confuse everybody? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is, has ended. Christopher?
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So if we waive the, having to have the other access point, is there anything that we can do as the, if he clears the rest of the lot and does any more paving, or obviously builds another building, that that additional entry would have to exist? It's on a corner, so you don't actually have to connect to the adjacent lot, do you? Just to the additional road?
Right. So the purpose of the inter parcel connectivity is for, to reduce the load on Martin Palmer. So I could let the, I could let Tony speak more on that as far as any future plans.
Well, since this is a doctor's office in the adjoining area, it's more of an industrial park, there is no reason, well, there's two things. We have drainage that goes around the building, there's a swell there, so there's, we wouldn't want to use that area where we have drainage swell connected around the, around the back of the building. And then also, there's no reason to connect a, you know, incompatible use like a doctor's office and patients for area that could be industrial. And this is a relatively small, you know, traffic count per day on this use. So it just was not applicable for this DICA project. You know, it's a small parcel, they, you know, the next two parcels already have like an easement going to the back, so, you know, we didn't feel like it was appropriate for this property.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Good evening. If I could add to the answer, I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. If any further land clearing or development of this lot takes place, it would once again trigger that code requirement for inter parcel connectivity. So at that time, they would be required to do that.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP-4966, access medical offices as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So SP-4966 passes. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I ask for clarification on the second?
Yeah, it was one of these two gentlemen, take your pick. Yeah, he's been short.
Okay, next up on our agenda is Golden Isles Collision, SP-5023. Consider the site plan for a 50-foot by 20-foot accessory storage building at 310 Candler Drive, parcel 03-12704. The property is in a planned development zoning district, PD GC 0792, Pete Shonauer. Did I say that right? Tidewater Engineering, agent for Lonnie Morales, Morales Brothers Enterprises LLC, applicant and owner. And again, Mr. Carey is presenting for the county.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Please consider a site plan for a 50-by-20 accessory building located at 310 Candler Drive. It is in a planned development, and the proposed building size is 3,750 square feet. Here's the site. Here's the site plan. The proposed addition will be going to the rear of the property. Here's proposed elevation. And here are your possible actions. Staff does recommend approval of SP-5023 as presented, and I do have Mr. Morales here to speak on behalf of the project.
Mr. Morales?
Yes, ma'am. We're just expanding, and we, we need more space to park cars and do our work.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Morales? All right. At this time, this is a public comment. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of this change, the site plan? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this site plan? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. The public comment period is closed. Does anyone have any questions for Christopher?
I make a motion that we approve SP-5023 as presented.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? SP-5023 has been approved. No, excuse me. Now, you guys, you got a new one up there since I looked back, okay. All right, the next one on our, the next item on our agenda is SP-4977, Brunswick Checkers Prototype. Consider site plan approval for a new Checkers Restaurant at 5599 Altama Avenue, parcel The site is in the Highway Commercial Zoning District, Kip Goodbred, EMC Engineering, agent for Valerie Bab, Starchecks Georgia LLC, owner. And again, Mr. Carey is presenting for the county.
Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Please consider site plan approval for a new Checkers Restaurant at 5599 Altama Avenue. The property was rezoned from medium residential to highway commercial on October 21st, and the site does consist, or the site will consist of a 1,800 square foot prototype restaurant and a 335 square foot accessory building. Here's the site. Here's the site plan. As you see to the north, there are two. There is both a right-hand and left-hand entrance and exit at Scranton Connector and also on Altama Avenue. Here are the proposed elevations. And your possible actions. And staff does recommend approval for SP-4977.
Okay, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Carey? So do we have?
I'm not sure if there's anyone here for, to represent for this application.
All right. State your name again, please.
Caterina Crumpler, EMC Engineering. It's just going to be a Checkers Restaurant, and with all the necessary improvements required for the restaurant.
All right, any questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, public comment period. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this site plan? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this site plan? Hearing none, seeing none, the public comment period is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve SP-4977 Brunswick Checkers Prototype as presented.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and second. Commissioners, how do you vote? All in favor? Are you voting, Richard?
I already did. You got to be quick.
Any, there's no opposition, so SP-4977 has passed. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a change of zoning request. It's for Christian Renewal Ministries, ZM 5027, request to rezone all of parcel 03-09176, 4265 Norwich Street Extension, number four to number six, to the Highway Commercial Zoning District. The parcel currently has a split zoning classification of Highway Commercial and M21 Family Residential. Mark Linton, Christian Renewal Ministries Incorporated, owner. And Ms. Thompson is here to speak on behalf of the county.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Pamela Thompson, the Director of Community Development. I'm here because your planning and zoning manager, Stephanie Leaf, is at the National Planning Conference, sitting as a speaker on a panel. She was part of a team selected to speak nationally to other planners about best practices. So we are very proud of her, and hopefully she is enjoying that conference. Yes, this is ZM 5027. This is a split zoned lot. The applicant is actually wanting to remove the existing mission house and replace it with some new modular classroom buildings, and where they want to place those is currently the M20 portion of the parcel, so this would make the entire parcel highway commercial for that use. This is the aerial zoning and location map. This is the plan for the layout of the property. The hatched section is the currently M20 zoned property and the subject of this rezoning request. These are your possible actions. That's the conclusion of the staff report. More detailed information was available in your packet. This is a public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do any of you have questions for Ms. Thompson? Do we have, do we have the applicant here? Okay, did you want to come up to the podium and speak? Please state your name.
It's Michelle Cassidy. Due to the number of additional students they've had enrolled, they're trying to do more buildings, and so that was one of the main, that's the main reason why they were trying to remove the mission house and change everything, so.
So you're here to ask us to approve this?
Please.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and, and so I'm asking if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this? If so, please come forward and state your name. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this rezoning? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve ZM 5027 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Commissioners, all in favor? No opposition, so ZM 5027 passes.
I'm here the rest of the evening.
You're up again, okay. You divided it up, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next on our agenda is ZM 5009 Royal Woods Planned Development District, a request to rezone approximately nine acres from local commercial and one family residential, R12, to planned development district to allow one-family duplex, triplex, and quadplex development as well as uses accessory to the residential use. The subject property is located at 953 and 967 Old Jessup Road, parcel numbers 03-03913 and 03-03914. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Matey Cruz, owner and applicant. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This is the aerial zoning map and location of the property in question. Again, this is a request to rezone nine acres to planned development. The proposed density is 10 units per acre. Currently, the two parcels could have up to 90 units. The local commercial property is 3.83 acres and has a single-family dwelling on it now. The density of the R12 zone property is 3.63 units per acre. Approximately 20 units could be constructed on this. And this site is formerly a commercial business, Haas Farm Service and Building Supplies. This is a survey of the property. This is a photograph of the existing single-family dwelling. Here are photographs up and down the street of the surrounding area, so you can see the character of this area. This proposed PD text was provided in your agenda packet. It is shown here for the record. And again, the permitted uses would allow one-family, one-family attached, one-family triplex, townhouses. Here is the proposed master plan for the site, and again, you received this in your packet with the ability to zoom in and look at the areas on the map. Here are your possible actions. Staff does recommend, if you approve this rezoning request, to add a condition that a traffic study is required to be submitted to the county at the time of construction plan submittal, so that we can see the at the time of construction plan submittals, so that we can see the impact and make sure we appropriately plan for it. That's the conclusion of the staff report, this is a public hearing and Mr. Jake Hightower is here this evening to speak to this project.
Mr. Hightower?
Good evening, thank you for your time tonight, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Uh, I'm here to ask that you approve this PD text as presented. And then also with me tonight, I have a concept plan that I'd like to show, uh, the commission as well as anyone here in attendance for this, uh, development, so they can kinda give an idea of what we're thinking for this development. Would you allow us to?
Absolutely.
This is our first time to use this as an example, so I appreciate you bearing with me while we pull this up. Let me see if I can get it to where you can see a little bit better. All right, so this development is by a local businesswoman who resides here in Glen County. She came to us back last fall and said that she had purchased the northern parcel and that she was going to purchase the parcel just beneath it and said that she was, kind of what she envisioned for the property was something in line with another development nearby, which is called Settlers Cove. And the difference is, and so I'll, I'll show you what Settlers Cove looks like. It's a, it's a duplex development where there are new built houses, they're very clean. The difference is, is that Settlers Cove has parking in the front, because this is actually a multifamily site, whereas this will be single family platted lots. Um, so it's not gonna have the parking, it's gonna have your traditional parking with, uh, a garage and then also a parking in the driveway as well. But what you can see here is kind of where we're seeing, or how we're trying to get the most use out of the property. If you zoom in, to see the word duplex, triplex, and quadplex sounds a little confusing, but really what we're trying to do is to get the required amount of right of way through the development, um, whether that's private or public, but, um, either way, we're gonna abide by the county standards for the design of the ta, of the streets. But our plan is to have, um, these duplexes, like this configuration, similar to Settlers Cove. In the middle, it kinda gets pinched out, so that's where we had a quadplex, where it'll basically be a duplex, but they'll just butt to each other back to back. And then sometimes when you have these flag lots or odd shaped lots, that's where we've seen triplexes do very well in other areas, uh, of the state. So it's, it's the same exact concept, but again, these are all individually owned. Um, and then around the, this is just, we do a 20% of impervious for our stormwater in the back. That's kinda where the site flows away from the, uh, the road. And then, um, you can see to the north here, um, this is a, a mobile home park right here, and then there's some residences to the north and to the south, single family residences, as well as across the road. Um, but this is, this is basically what we're in line of, of kinda the vision of the project for what we wanna see. Right now, the zoning allows us up to 10 units per acre. Um, this is a conceptual plan and the conceptual plan shows of about, uh, 5.8 to 6 units per acre. Um, but once we actually start to get the rest of the data for the, uh, the stormwater retention, that'll, like I said, it'll just kinda see if we can use some of this extra space, it's kinda dead space in the back. Uh, but we're just trying to stay in line with what some of the other PD texts have been approved within Glen County of allowing this kind of development. But again, uh, this is kinda what we're trying to see. The applicant, who is, um, like I said, a, a businesswoman here locally, she basically said, "I just want something that's clean, it's gonna help property values around here, new build houses, and something that is in line with kinda market rates right now for what is needed in terms of housing for the city of Brunswick, Glen County, and the surrounding areas." But I can leave this up, uh, as well, but if anybody has any questions... Actually, I guess I need to go back to the PowerPoint, but if anybody has any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them and I'm here available as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this point, uh, for Mr. Hightower?
Do you have any elevation?
We do have, um, the LiDAR from, provided from the county, but we've not done the finished floor elevations. Um, it is gonna be single story houses, though it's not gonna be, uh, something that's, that's very tall in nature.
Mr. Hightower?
Yes, sir.
One of the egress and egress is gonna be Boyd Drive?
No, sir, the only one is Old Jessup Road.
No, sir, I'm talking, w, w, how, how are you gonna get in and out of the property? Whether you're gonna put a new?
A new road.
Access?
Yes, sir, two curb cuts.
You're not gonna use Boyd Drive at all?
No, sir, I'm, we're only gonna use Old Jessup Road.
Okay, so there're gonna be a new, new road cut out onto Old Jessup?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Do you have any other questions?
Mr. Hightower, is there two, gonna be one entrance or two off Old Jessup? Uh, it looked like there might've been two.
Two.
There is two.
Yes, sir, there's two, and so that's kinda what the county's been asking, is that we have two points of ingress and egress, depending on the, the amount of units. But right now, it's, it's two curb cuts.
So one of them is gonna be close to Boyd Drive?
I apologize, sir, I would have to look at the map. I, I know it's just south of Walker Road, um, if I can pull it up again and see. But there's no road right here that I know of, these are all, uh, residences right here. But I, if I need to, I can go back and look at the map.
Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, if you, if you continue to speak, I will ask you to leave the auditorium.
So Commissioner Strickland, here is where the property is, what road are you wanting to point out to Mr. Hightower?
The relationship to Boyd Drive is, is right there.
Oh, boy, just to the south.
That's it.
Yes, sir, there's no way to, there's no, there is no ownership of parcels to get access to Boyd Drive. It's, it's, this is a, this is an owner right here, if we pull up the, uh, site plan, or, sorry, the zoning exhibit, or the survey that shows that these are four individually owned lots.
And that's a railroad track behind it, that's not a road?
Yes, sir, that's correct, that's a railroad track, this is Walker Road, right here.
Okay.
No more questions for Mr. Hightower?
I have a quick question, so is, in, is it the owner's intention to retain ownership of all of it? Or hopefully sell some of it to have actual homeowners in the development?
It's gonna be a combination of both, she's gonna, she has the intention of keeping a couple, but then she's gonna also open up if, if someone wants to pay for them, by all means. Um, kinda a combination of both.
Mr. Hightower?
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the price range that she's looking at?
There'll be market rates, um, it's not any sort of special financing such as government housing or anything like that, Title 8, Section 8, nothing like that, it's just gonna be in line with what the market conditions are, um, are dictating. Uh, if we were to say what the price is now?
I understand.
It could be higher when it's actually built, prices are fluctuating so much right now. I'd love for them to stay the same, uh, the hardest thing is that when they fluctuate up and down, but, um, at this time, it's just gonna be kind of closer to time. Uh, surrounding, uh, sales, um, basically they'll, that'll dictate what they'll be sold for.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hightower.
Thank you.
This, this is a public hearing, uh, and I would like to remind everyone that, uh, uh, we will talk, we will have people to speak for and against this. I will also remind you that you cannot talk over anyone, you cannot point fingers at anyone. Uh, we are going to keep this orderly, because I can see already that there's a lot of tension in, in the room. And, uh, so if you would like to speak in favor of this plan, would you come to the podium, state your name? Are you speaking in favor? Come to the podium and state your name. Okay? If there are individuals in here who would like to speak in opposition of this, please come to the podium, state your name, and address your comments to the commission, not to anyone else in the audience.
Hello, everybody, um, my name is Brenda Boyd Cross. Uh, my family lived across the street. My mom and daddy and everybody's lived there 120 years. And, um, what it is, is on Walker Road, right around the corner, there's 280 buildings being made right now to be, uh, houses. And I, um, all my, all my family, all my friends around me are widder people. Now, I'm, I'm not married, but everybody's a widder people. And we disapprove of having this here, 'cause we're scared. And, and, um, now, now if it's high income, it wouldn't be bad, but if it's low income, we'd be very scared to live there. And, um, my next door neighbor has, lives right beside it and she's got five acres of land. I've got two acres of land. And we love our home. And we don't want anybody to move in that's gonna come and destroy our place or come and, or might wanna kill us. You know what, you know what I'm saying? And so I'm asking for, and, and there's a thousand cars that come down my road every day. I work on the school bus and I leave there at 6 o'clock in the morning, so I have a few cars. But if you come down my road at 4 and 5 o'clock in the afternoon, there's over a thousand cars. And if this people want to come in and move here across the street from me, we gonna have to put in a, a, a red light, darling, because they not gonna have no way of getting in and out of the driveway, because we got so many people coming up and down our road. And I'd love for y'all to come, anytime you want to, and come and sit at my house. I live in a little green trailer, right across from where this is coming to. And I've been there for nine years. And, um, just please have mercy on our soul, and please ask God for it, to, to give us mercy. And don't let this building come in that's gonna be four and five stories high, where they can look in our bedroom windows at night. You understand what I'm saying? 'Cause we're all widder women, and, and I, and I ain't had a man in a long time, so, you know, I'm, I'm there by myself, I'm scared. But my neighbor, she's, she's got five acres of land and it's right beside, right there. She's gonna have to have a wall put up between that building and that. See what I'm saying? She's gonna have to have all that, because they would be rotting her, right in her yard. But I live right across the street, that you would have to put a, 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 a light there where people could come in and out, because them people don't go 35 miles an hour down our road. They go from anywhere from 50 to 60 miles an hour trying to hit that red light in the afternoons. But anyway, if y'all have any love in your heart for me, please, please ask them not to do this, please. Thank you very much.
Hello, uh, my name is Timothy Johnson. I also live on Old Jessup Road, and my family's lived there for over 120 years. My mother-in-law lives right beside Brenda, um, at, uh, 944 Old Jessup Road. Her driveway is right across from where the old driveway going into Haas's feeding seed. And that permit for that commercial, um, development was probably 75 years ago. There's been no commercial activity on that property in 40 or 45 years. I don't know if you realize that. They're trying to make it look like it's some kind of operational, commercial business going on, and that's not true. Hasn't been for a very long time. Um, the main reason we oppose it is the traffic. At the, uh, canal, I guess it's called Canal Landing Development, across the spur, Canal Road, Sam's and all this development. Um, that caused a lot of the traffic on, to pick up on Old Jessup Road. And at peak times, 8:30, 2:30, 5:30 on the way here, um, traffic is backed up, and we need some relief. They have done some stuff, a stoplight at Canal Road, that's where I live, about a half block from Canal Road at intersection of Old Jessup. And, um, they've got a turn lane there, hasn't really helped any. I also need to note that the bridge there has already been approved to be, um, rebuilt in 2024. So that's gonna cause some problems. Um, I think this development, I, what do we need 90 duplexes on Old Jessup Road for? Old Jessup Road is the old community, it's the old part of the Glendale subdivision, which I live in. 15 years ago, I was denied a permit to build a house on my .8 acre behind my house. Reason for is because the old subdivision, you got private drives, and they wanted to, um, one owner and one, um, property. This was originally mini farms. My father had a chicken farm, and, um, we got some new neighbors now. And in front of my mother-in-law, they've come in and rebuilt the houses, remodeled the houses, and got the property looking great. And that's what the encouragement, and that's what they was talking to me about 15 years ago. That's what they wanna do in this neighborhood. That's what gets property prices up, paint the house, remodel the house, clean the yard up, save these lovely oak trees we have. This development will do nothing, it would be a failure. It would destroy Old Jessup Road, let's look at emergency vehicles from Ballard. Old Jessup Road doesn't have a very much of a shoulder, it's what you call a soft shoulder. So right now, presently, cars stop and they have to zigzag to come through. And emergency vehicles has picked up over the last two or three years, I would say five or six times a week, maybe more. The other thing we oppose, what about the sewage? JWSC, we're gonna use them, call them, over capacity. Here's an ad in the paper tonight, they're gonna shut down part of Canal Road. One of their sewer lines runs down Canal Road, goes under Old Jessup, goes down Argent Drive, under the railroad track, to the right, to Glendale. And they, you can go by there now, go down Glendale Road, south of Rich CPAC. Look at the rental pump trucks, vacuum trucks. They're overloaded, and this is the new proposal, a horizontal line. It's gonna go right beside the one they already have, and they don't mind telling you that they're overcapacity. They gonna have to put in a lift station or something, I don't know what the deal is. They're, they're even talking about putting a sewer line on my property, which of course, we're gonna reject. Spending, cutting down live oak trees, spending 300 something thousand dollars for nothing, for a line that nobody's gonna use. I don't have any confidence in them, and I haven't heard anything about the sewage and water, what are they gonna do? In other words, this is gonna be a failure for everyone. You're gonna look back on this if you approve this. I may not be here in 10 years, I don't know how long it'll take, but, uh, turn it down, I mean...
Sir, your, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
You should probably move up closer. Go ahead, sir.
I'm Mike Carter. My family's on the property, the house that was shown, that they're buying, or if it's already bought, they passed away in 2009.
Sir, would you turn and address the commission?
Yeah, I'm sorry. But my family's on that three properties all the way to Walker, the trailer park since '78. Well, the one on the, closer to the trailer park, he bought later. But they were friendly upholstery. They built, I got just a thousand, not even quite a thousand square foot house, which is repaired right now because of hurricanes. Tree fell on it, and I got made untroubled the price on number and everything. But anyhow, that's right beside my property. I don't see how they're going to get 10 units on an acre. I mean, that's a bunch of everybody right there together. I mean, I don't see how anybody can have any place to move. I only got a thousand square foot. I want an acre and a half, or acre and a quarter. And if it does approve, I want a privacy fence down my property line on their cause. Because I've had privacy for, since I bought the house, I inherited a house since 2011. But we've been there, my family, since '98. No, '78, I mean. And I don't want 90 units next to my house. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Raymond Phillips. I live at 960 Old Jessup. And my driveway is directly across from where they're going to build it. Number one, the sewage line ends a half a mile on either side of this project. In order to put a sewage line in, you're going to tear up the Old Jessup Road. We've got gas lines, we've got water lines, already there. We don't have sewage lines. This is strictly from the county itself. I didn't make it up. Second, traffic is terrible. They're going to add units across the road. Mr. Johnson expressed...
Sir, please address the commission.
I said, Mr. Johnson expressed the idea of emergency vehicles. That's true. When you've got people pulling in your driveway to get these big fire trucks through, what is extra traffic going to do to us? Widening the Old Jessup Road is not exactly a cheap undertaking. And the county will have to widen that road. And the section we're in, it will cost over $12 million to widen that road. Can you afford it?
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition?
Butch Geiger, I live on 106 Boyd Drive. 68 years off and on over there. And we've been trying for years just to get a turn lane on Old Jessup Road, and it won't work. They've surveyed it several times, even do something to it. And we finally got them to put a little turn lane right there at Canal Road. I call on the talk station on radio every morning begging for... They've got three intersections there with double red lights there. Not a single one's got a turn arrow on it. The ones out by Fletzy where I work, they do have it, and they even flash yellow so you can turn when there's no cars coming. Anything like that would help. But like you've heard, it's just a bottleneck there, mornings and evenings. But if this was to pass, it would... I don't think it's going to be a very good thing because it's just crowded. And like I say, if they were to go in there, they would have to cut down all them trees. I don't know if any of y'all ever walked on there or not. Me and my daddy used to buy feed right there at Hossie's Farm. You'd go in there, and man, it was just... I mean, I know they're bigger and prettier now, the oak trees in there. But like the other guy said, I would want a privacy fence 20 foot high if I could get one because I've just enjoyed the peace and the quiet. Well, the trailer park gets a little rowdy at times down there, you know, on the weekends. But you live with that. But it's just, the road just can't handle that kind of pressure, I don't think. And you've got potholes now, you've got to dodge, you know, on each side of the road. It's just going to be a strain on everybody, I think. And you can't even put a sidewalk over there. They say there's no room for a sidewalk. You see people every evening on bicycles dodging traffic. And, you know, it looks like Pac-Man out there going in and out of cars and all. And it's just amazing nobody's got run over lately. But just think about, you know, they could sell it to somebody to put two or three houses maybe in there and enjoy it a lot better. But 90 houses with four to five people per house and two or three cars per house. And it's just, I hope it doesn't work. Just think about it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jamie Rowell. I'm at 966 Old Jessup Road. We're directly across. You actually had a picture of my house, the one that me and my dad remodeled during COVID. But I think we all share kind of the same concern as far as the traffic. But I did notice that there was a provision in that if approved, that there would be a study done, which is what everybody's biggest concern, I think. I feel like there's too many questions that aren't answered, and there's too much leeway for approval at this point. For instance, there's not really a price point. We don't know what we're getting over here. And I know he addressed that with, you know, market conditions is you can't predict that. But, I mean, what are we hoping, you know, just from a value standpoint to be able to get out of these homes? And then also, it's intended to sell them, but market conditions can kind of dictate that as well. If nobody's buying them, then you're forced to rent them. Is that something that's likely based on price point? Could they be priced out of the market for sale, and that be the plan all along? There's just a lot of questions. And the study, the traffic study's the main one. How would that work? Would there be that study done prior to approval? Or would it be approved pending the traffic study? Like, how would that work? Those would be my only questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Kerry Hunt. I live at 952 Old Jessup Road, next door to the gentleman that just spoke. I think our major concern is, like he says, the traffic. Given times during the day, the traffic backs up all the way from Walker Road or the other stoplight in front of my property. If I have to, you know, leave the property, I have to get somebody to give me a break just so I can pull it out on the road. And my concern is that if we add those 90 units across the road, how much more is that going to improve them? I mean, how much more traffic is that going to have? That's going to just, you know, make that problem worse. That's just the major concern. And my other concern is, I think he was saying, single level, we're talking... But is there any stipulation? I mean, if it's approved for duplex, quadplex, and so forth, is it still going to be single levels that's all it's going to be approved for? That's another one of my concerns. But I just appreciate you thinking about this, and thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Hightower to come back to the podium, and I know he's been taking notes, and address some of your questions. Oh, and, excuse me, the public hearing is now closed. Now, come on, Jake. I'm still learning stuff.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, ma'am, I was riding as fast as I could while I was sitting down there. And so I'll basically work my way from recent to, back to Ms. Brenda. The traffic study, how does that work? How that would work is, what we would do is we'd hire a traffic consultant so that when it actually does come time for us to actually design the alignment of the street, if they say it requires a traffic light, that would be discussed between the developer and the county, how to make that happen, if it's a turn lane. It's all, it's basically a very large... We've sent those traffic studies in during site plan phases. A lot of times, it's really associated with the construction phase. But it's designed to make sure that the existing use of the road fits the existing conditions of the property as well. And there's kind of tier systems based on speed limits, volume density to where if it gets to a certain amount, it'll trigger, say, hey, you have to actually put in this turn lane, or whatever the case may be. And that's something that we do for all of our developments. And so that's something that we're 100% willing to fund from the developer's standpoint, to pay for that traffic study, which will then be vetted through the engineering department with Glen County for all the work done within the roadway, whatever is needed. But that's kind of the way the traffic study works. And then there was, I think it was, Mr. Mike talked about a privacy fence when he was walking back to his seat. So we will do the Glen County buffers. So that'll be the 12-foot natural buffer in addition to the privacy fence as well. So the whole site will be fenced, not just for keeping... It's basically to keep cross traffic, not, basically only from the ingress and egress points so that no one can walk between either developments. This is not, like I said in the beginning, this is a single female businesswoman who wants to sell these for a profit. This is not anything, like I said, anything that will get tax incentives to try to get low-income housing. This is going to be a well-done project, just like the pictures I showed, with brand-new-built houses. And they're going to be individual lots, so they're not going to be... There won't be a big multifamily development. There were some comments about water and sewer, so we did secure a water and sewer availability letter. The water and sewer department, they are consistently upgrading their systems. And the way that they're doing that, there's two things they can do. They can either, A, increase our water bill as existing platted homeowners, or they can charge tap fees for new developments. And that helps fund the upgrades of the lift stations, help force main installations. And basically with these taps, they will all be charged a capital fee to help pay for the infrastructure. And there is a water main that runs, I think it's a 12-inch that runs along Old Jessup Road. And then they're also proposing in their water and sewer availability letter that we tie into the sewer manhole for the sewer system that runs to the north of the property. So that has been vetted to make sure that there is... That's part of the process for zoning, is to make sure that there is the utilities available for this kind of development. So this is, the northern part is zoned local commercial. So without a rezoning, it could be done as a commercial business. Some of the uses include stores, liquor stores. They want to make this in line with the rest of the development, the rest of the community of single-family home, platted lots, not multifamily, not big commercial businesses. Then Ms. Brenda, she talked about how she's scared. And like I said, this is going to be a well-planned-out, clean neighborhood. If, when we say market conditions, if you let bad people come into that neighborhood, it's going to drop the prices of everything else around it in terms of... You don't want to buy next to... If you're going to have a house, they're all new-built houses, and someone has, they've trashed their house, that's not going to be good for their neighbors. So they have an incentive to keep it clean and nice and orderly. So I hope that it's understood that, or I hope that the picture's been conveyed clearly that this is going to be a well-thought-out, nice, clean establishment. So I hope that that does give some comfort. It's not going to be five stories high, looking in the back of your windows. The plan, like I said, is to have single-level duplexes, who would not have line of sight to anybody else. But I think I handled, or I think I kind of touched on most of the points, but if there's any other questions or clarifications you'd like for me to talk about, I'd be happy to.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
There is a 12-inch force main besides Old Jessup Road.
Jake, there is a 12-inch force main sewer line that runs...
Are you asking or telling? Because the map that I have...
No, I'm asking, yes.
Oh, no, sir, there's a water line.
The gentleman said we didn't have it. It was a half a mile both ways.
There is a gravity sewer line that runs on the other side of the mobile home development. It's probably, it's not half a mile away. I wish I could send this picture up, but this is part of... It should have been in the zoning packet, I believe. But it shows that there is a gravity sewer system that feeds to the rest of the joint water and sewer system. So we'll basically have a private lift station go to a sewer manhole that's north of the, it's right adjacent to the mobile home park. And then there is a water line that runs along the road. There is no force main that runs along the highway, or, sorry, not along the highway, along Old Jessup Road at this time.
But it is gravity-fed.
It's gravity-fed to the north.
Okay, and you did say you had a letter that joint water and sewer let you tie into it for this neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Okay, one more question for you. I don't know how familiar you are with this area. But if you come back towards Ballard on the right-hand side, the same side as the proposed property, there's already a couple of developments that's very similar to what's wanting to be done there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Then there's also a lot going along Walker Road as well.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so Mr. Rowell, with it being a PD text, you had mentioned that it's really going to be closer to maybe six units per acre, I believe you said.
Conceptually, that's what we're looking at, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So I think one of the concerns is that it's going to be 90 units.
Right.
So is that, have any idea if you and the owner would be willing to add into the PD text that it's limited to a certain number of residents? So it's not 90, it's maybe closer 55 or 60, which I know that conceptual is not 90 units.
Right. That's the wrong one. That's correct. Right now, we have it at 10 units per acre. And we also have for uses, townhouses. The only way to get 90 units in there is if you do a townhouse development. So to make sure we can't do that, we can strike number five. And then also, that eliminates the possibility of going vertical, right? So there is a height limitation. But if it's a townhouse, it can't get higher than, I believe, 35 feet is about what the typical text is. That's lot width, front yard, 35 feet. So if we take townhouse out, that's not going to be the case. And then 10 units per acre is kind of standard set throughout a lot of the PD texts within the county. But Ms. Cruz, who is the owner of the property, she did say that we can decrease that density if it would appease folks. If we take it down from 10 to 6, I mean, that's a 40% reduction. If that would make folks feel more comfortable, then I feel that's a fair ask.
So no townhouses and six units per acre?
Yes, ma'am. And that's, if you were to take townhouses being sold at, my goodness, $300,000, 40 times $300,000 is a lot of money. So she'd be taking a huge blow to her potential upside if we were to say not 10 but 6. So I just want it to be known that that's limiting quite a bit compared to some of the other developments that we're doing within Glen County actively. So that's, like I said, that'd be a large hit. If we could do seven, that's fine. But, I mean, again, we'll just, I think six is fair.
Mr. Hightower, I have just a couple of questions for the benefit of those, the homeowners that are here that are concerned about the value of, you know, these, you know, houses.
Yes, sir.
Is there a price range that you could give to us based on your design now? You know, based on the market rates now? Do you have a price range that you would be able to give to the audience now?
That's a very good question, Commissioner Dawson. I think that the... I think that the best way to do that would be to have someone with a professional opinion, like a Realtor, answer that question. So for me, I make the engineering work, they handle the cost, but I'd be happy to get that answer to you and to anybody else who's curious. And I can present that at the Board of Commissioners. But again, the big caveat there is that the price that we've seen is only going to go up. It's, it's, it'd be a range, um, but I, we can't put that in the PD text because, you know, Lord, hopefully there's no '08 again, but I, again, I'd, we only see it going up, but I'd be happy to, to ask, um, some local, uh, professionals in that area. I just don't want to get out of my lane, to be honest.
Yes, and I know sometimes Realtors, they can kind of give a comparative market analysis of, of the, you know, the property. And I was just wondering if you had a range in mind. Uh, but my second question is this. Now, would you have something, um, along the lines of a homeowners association that would be included in this to kind of protect the property values?
So there is plans to do homeowners association, it's not part of the PD text, but there is plans to do that because there is talk of having a, a common, kind of a, uh, whether, whether there be common areas or any sort of, uh, facilities like that, um, there would be a homeowners association that's registered with the state in order to actually make sure that the neighborhood abides by their, their covenants and restrictions.
So being a Realtor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, what, what's, in general, those, that conceptual, what square foot are those units? Do you remember how they vary?
All I know is, so it's, it's based on the, uh, I'll tell you, uh, the, there was a development Fox Run, and we honestly just traced those Fox Run houses, and that's what we used. Um, I think those are about, I mean, again, I, I can't remember the exact square footage. If I had my computer, I could tell you in a second. But they're within the bounds of the setbacks. Maybe, geez, I'm trying to think. Maybe about 1,200 square feet per side, so, so 2,400 overall per unit. Um, that's, that's just kind of a rough, off-the-cuff guess right now.
I mean, you can probably speak to building prices, costs. I mean, they, I mean, they're going to, yeah, mhm, yeah, I mean, they're going to be...
It's going to cost between $285,000 and $350,000 each, each bill for retail. It's not going to cost that deal, it's going to cost retail, it'll be a sale. It's somewhere between $285,000 and $350,000. That's what Cedars Cove.
That style and that, those materials?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's for both, both sides or one side? Like a duplex, the whole piece or each unit?
Per, it, it, well...
Just to clarify for folks.
Per unit, per dwelling, per dwelling unit?
Yes, okay.
Yes. Yes, it, 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 to build that whole building, it would cost around $400,000 in cost.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they'll have a problem, it's going to help with the property va- values in that area. My concern, and most everyone brought it up, and, you know, we're not going to fix it, we've been worried about it for 30 years, Old Jessup Road impacts with traffic. And you did, I want to make sure I heard, if they come back with the traffic study and we have to make a, say, going from, going north, you had to make a left-hand turn to kind of, uh, Ms. Cruz, and y'all are fine with doing whatever it is to help with the traffic out there?
So long as it's in line with what the traffic study says, which are dictated by the...
Yeah, based on it.
Yes, sir, GDOT, it's, 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 GDOT has a manual that says, that basically lays it out. So if it's a left-hand turn lane, if it's a D cell lane, whatever's needed per GDOT standards, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, because it's a, it's a difficult, you've been out there, it's a difficult area, but I want to make sure that y'all are willing to do whatever to help these neighbors because traffic is, has been heavily impacted.
Yes, sir. And that's from a liability standpoint, from the developer and the county as well, to make sure that they abide by those standards.
All right. Thank you.
I have one question for Ms. Thompson, if I may.
Ms. Thompson's been at the edge of her seat trying to catch somebody's eye, so she's glad you called her up.
Okay, good. Ms. Thompson, we have developers, um, come to us to propose doing a development like this. We all know, living in Glen County, that at some point, um, Old Jessup Road is going to have to be four-lane, okay? To some people's delight, and some people is not going to be delighted about it, but it's going to have to be done if we're going to grow. And if we don't, um, get developments like this in that area, I would predict in 20 years, Old Jessup Road's going to be exactly the same. You, you have to flood the county, and you have to make them realize it has to be done to spend the money, to get the commission to do it. Now, are you making, um, arrangements to get that right-of-way from the developer? That for future use?
Yes, sir. One of the things I wanted to add on to was the, quite, two of the topics that were brought up by some of the public comments you heard tonight. To add to what Mr. Hightower said, when he does the traffic study, all necessary onsite and off-site improvements are required to be done by the developer. That is a project improvement. What can't happen is a system improvement. So we couldn't ask, ha- ask this owner to go down to the spur and make an improvement. But if this, if this development through that traffic study triggers an improvement to the intersection of Old Jessup and Canal, they have to make it. And they have to make it, or they can't have that development, or they have to reduce the traffic counts to make it work. The other thing is, it can be harder for the county to make road improvements than a new developer because for us to four-lane, we're going to have to go to both sides of the street, every owner that fronts on Old Jessup, and work with them to acquire right-of-way. The developer, for example, if that traffic study, and we haven't seen it yet, if it said there's a left-turn lane needed into that development, and they can't get right-of-way on the other side of the road, they have to use their land to provide the right-of-way and all the land needed for that improvement. So a D cell lane, a turn lane, any of those improvements needed, they have to improve that and, and provide that property. So, yes, sir, their proposal and their concept, again, it is a concept because that's what they'd like. The construction plans is where you get into the details to see what can actually be supported out there. Thank you. And the other point I wanted to make, um, and in your review packet, is the full history. We have multiple departments and divisions review every application that comes before you. And the Joint Water and Sewer Commission is one. Um, Mr. Hightower said they had a sewer availability letter. They also never raised capacity for sewer as an issue on the site. So typically with that review, if there are improvements needed outside of the property, for example, if a lift station needed to be upgraded, they would already know that at this concept point, and you would know that as part of your report.
Do I have any other questions from Ms. Thompson while she's at the podium? Public comment is closed.
And thank you, we did actually, uh, the question about the traffic light, I texted our public works director, and we've got their number, and we're going to answer some of their questions about that tomorrow.
No, sir, the public comment period is closed. The public comment period is closed, sir. Please take your seat. Please take your seat. Please take your seat. Thank you. Commissioners.
So just one more question for staff, sorry to let you sit down. So, um, no issues if, um, if, if our, um, motion, if we had a motion to approve that we did limit it to, um, seven units per acre and, um, no townhomes? We can make that change here, and then that will be passed on to the commission, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And then staff did ask for the one condition, if the planning commission's pleasures, to recommend approval.
Happy to make a motion? I'll make a motion?
Okay, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve ZM 5009 with the following conditions. One, that a traffic study is required to be submitted to the county at the time of construction plan submittal. That the PD text is amended to exclude townhomes, and is further amended to only have seven units per acre.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposition? So the motion passes. ZM 5009 has been approved.
Um, next, next up is, uh, ZM 5012. That is the Chancellor Crossing Plan Development District Amendment. Request to amend the Chancellor Crossing Plan Development PD District ZM 2007-027 to allow for additional types of residential uni- uses within the areas of the PD. The PD is located at 4972 and 5102 Highway 99, Parcell 03-2021099 and 03-21100. Jake Hightower, Robert Civil Engineering Agent for RM and SPLLC, Southern Real Property, Inc., Rick O. Smith, and Daniel R. Co- R. Cody Owners. And Ms. Thompson is here to present for the county.
Yes, ma'am. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is 26.46 acres that's currently vacant and undevel- undeveloped, and the proposal is for some highway commercial and medium residential uses. They are requesting to amend the master plan and PD text for Chancellor Crossing that's near Highway 99 and Chancellor Road. The master plan, uh, currently shows a strip center, office building, storage units, and residential row housing. They're requesting to amend this text to allow for all residential uses that are permitted in medium residential zoning. Uh, that maximum density is 16 units per acre, and to, uh, the highway commercial portions will remain in the revised PD text. The proposal before you this evening actually shows both HC uses and MR uses across the entirety of the 26 acres. This is the property. So you can see the current PD text, and then the revised proposal before you this evening. This is the current master plan. This is the revised master plan, uh, copy is in your agenda packet. These are your possible actions. Uh, this concludes the staff report, this is a public hearing, and Mr. Hightower is here as agent.
Good evening, Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering, thank you for your time tonight. Um, I'm going to flip back over to show kind of what the conceptual looks like over here. Um, before I get into that, though, I'll just make a couple of points. This is a PD text amendment. We're not asking for any really additional uses other than, I guess you can say, the, the residential, uh, single-family residential? Wait, okay, yeah, perfect, thank you. So this is what we had. When we, uh, our client approached us, uh, about this property, um, they said, you know, we're looking at both of these two parcels, and we, we reach out to staff as we do at the very beginning to say, hey, you know, what's the zoning, what are the uses, what can we do with this property? And this was part of the zoning packet. And so the original one said that there was going to be a, a strip center right here. Um, this is, this would be a freestanding, two freestanding office units, um, storage facilities here, storage facility office, um, some row housing right here. But the way that the county ordinances read is that in order for us to do this development, we have to abide by basically this layout. Um, so therefore, we said, well, if, if we want to go buy something, anything different than what it is right here, say for instance, put a, uh, convenience store right here. We'd have to amend this rezoning, so we'd be here no matter what, basically, to, to amend the way these master plans look. But that's, that's kind of where it was, let me exit out of these. For this, for this, for this property, like I said, we're not asking for any extra density, we're not asking for any, um, extra uses. If anything, we just basically cleaned up the text to read that we can have, um, again, based on market studies, multifamily, single-family, or highway commercial, as it already states within the PD text, allowed. Um, the only difference, like I said, is just the configuration is, is what's kind of our impediment right now. And on top of that, uh, with the fact that they've, uh, you know, purchased this land, you know, we personally would, would like to agree on our side that when they purchase it, they want to make sure that they're, um, abiding by all the regulations, but also they'd kind of like to not be, um, tied to this exact development plan with the, with the property that they're already purchasing. Um, so let me pull you, pull up a couple of things. Again, this is, you know, conceptual in nature. Um, I guess that was the original PD text exhibit. Uh, we're playing with a different layout to show, um, because we're basically trying to see what would be the best use. This is, um, one layout that's very similar to the existing PD text, which would be, I'll zoom in so you can see, sir. Ma'am, sorry, I had a slight eye of the corner of my eye. This is the strip, strip mall like they had, but again, we have to show detention, um, conceptual, because detention, once we do the infiltration test, it might get smaller. That's your convenience store, your parking. And then looking at doing something like a multifamily, um, similar to a coastal club, uh, right here. But again, this is, these, sorry, go back, these, as is right now with the, with the units right here are already within the PD text. Um, we just want to say, rather than just keep them along this fence, we'd like to buffer it and then put the rest of it up here as well. Um, again, staying in line with what the PD allows. This is kind of what the coastal club looks like currently, um, within Brunswick. And then, this is a potential other track where, and again, still conceptual, but this is the way we thought about it. So this right here is Cottage Grove, Phase 1. And this would basically say, okay, we're going to take the exact same thing we're doing here, but flip it on the other side, but then keep kind of multifamily the same. So, uh, those are kind of our options within what the PD texts we're looking at. Um, but again, this is Cottage Grove where, um, there is development ongoing right now. So, um, having said that, um, now, uh, if, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that y'all might have as well. And we also ask that you approve the PD text as we've presented it tonight.
Commissioner, do you have any questions of Mr. Hightower at this moment?
Can you put it back up, the triangle with the colors?
Yes, ma'am.
Whoops, sorry, no, on the original slide.
Oh, the original, the Microsoft Paint.
So I just want to make sure I understand, uh, so where it has row houses? Is that, can those be currently at kind of row house? I don't know the answer to this, sorry, I might need to ask staff, but can it be a three-story structure?
It can.
So the difference for these folks, I assume some of the folks in the room that live, um, behind this is instead of just having part of it be three-story, they could end up with the purp- the fuchsia, I guess, color. Um, that's supposed to be storage units, could also be four stories. I mean, three stories, right?
And we're still playing with if we want to put, I mean, because, because there's going to be, uh, an additional right-of-way, I think it's 50 feet, don't quote me exactly, right here. Um, but that was part of ours, is that there's already a plan for whenever Highway 99 expands. That was part of the original PD text. So that's, that, that is a funky kind of point up there if we have to. Um, that's kind of where we originally laid out some detention. But, uh, again, like I said, it's, it's, once we lay out the site, we'll have detention, um, onsite, but basically just kind of trying to make this more, uh, more efficient use of the space.
So how many, if the... So how many, if the plan changed, the conceptual, how many units is that of it?
On this one, 16 units per acre, in line with medium residential. So as it would sit now, it would be potentially up to, one second. It's six buildings at 24 units per acre, 156 units on that top right triangle piece. Like I said, kind of in line with the medium, it's, it's, it is Glen County's medium residential zoning.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes ma'am.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here in favor of this plan? Who would like to come and speak in favor? If so, come to the podium and state your name. Is there anyone in here who would like to come and speak in opposition to this plan? If so, come to the podium and state your name.
My name's Alisa Cordell. I live at 45 Caribou Way, which was, is directly behind the wooded area. I have a question. The long, where it says Chancellor Road at the bottom, says 99. Are the proposed convenience store apartments or whatever, is that proposed on the right side or both left and right side?
Mr. Hightower will be making notes, and he can answer that question.
Okay, okay. And also, I would like to know that when this is approved, what type of buffer do we as residents of Cottage Grove have to protect us from four-story apartment buildings or a convenience store? As I've been told, an upgraded convenience store, if there's such a thing. Right now, we are faced with issues on nothing like New Jess, oh, Joseph Road, but we do have a railroad track right there, and it is very active. At some points during the day, it can run as many as five times. When it is running, that road is absolutely dead. You can't do anything. Sometimes you can be sitting there for an hour waiting for the train because there's a switch station right there. There are homes, 100 homes being built in Autumn's Wood with the plans of probably 1,000 more that they're clearing the land for. There's the subdivision right next to it, and I can't think of the name of it.
Tanglewood?
Yes ma'am, thank you. That is being expanded right now. There is a second phase of Cottage Grove. Actually, it is not Cottage Grove, it is a separate entity with the same name that is being built on right now with 100 units, 50 buildings, two units per building, so 100-plus more homeowners down there with plans to also expand King's Walk, which is just a little ways down from the other Cottage Grove. Chancellor Road is, is a busy road all the time. I don't know where the cars come from and where they're going, but it's constant. When the train is stopped, if we have car, if we have hundreds of homes up and down 99, where will they go? Where's the traffic going to end up if there's homes? And I understand that it is zone commercial slash some parts of residential in there. I've lived there for 14 years. The land's been vacant, and now all of a sudden with all the other boom, it wants to be built on. So my main concern is protecting the homeowners of Cottage Grove. What kind of buffer? What kind of plans, where would these developments be? Their entrances be off of 99, off of Chancellor Road? Where's the access coming from? What is there to do with the possibility of the trains when they come? And there's no certain time of the day. They're just, they're there, and you have a long way to go around to get back to where I live. I do believe that directly behind where the long purple strip is on the left, and Cottage Grove is, fits in there somewhere, that there is a county right-of-way back there that I think that there used to be a road or something at one time that's back there. Would the buffer be? Here's Cottage Grove, here's the road that I'm thinking of, okay? And then that land, would the buffer be before where the old road was, where the county access right-of-way is? Or would it be from the county right-of-way? Oh, does that make sense?
Thank you, we'll have Mr. Hightower.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, my name is Jerry Bargneer, I live at 28 Caribou Way. My property would, but right up next to where they have the commercial portion of it, and I agree with everything Ms. Cordell said, and, and do take into consideration the increased traffic because we not only have this intense growth going along 99 and down Chancellor, but with I-95 and 17, then State Highway 99 is, has tremendous use. And like she said, with the train, if it's there and it's switching, it can take 45 minutes. And, you know, that law about, they can't block the road that long is not true. So, and like, we have no other option to get to our place. Even if you went around, the traffic can be backed up all the way to the Golden Isle Spur, and you can't get to your property. We have no other outlet on Chancellor to get out. And so I would like that to be taken into full consideration. And then I think a come, a convenience store when, at the intersection of 341 and 99, which would also be a huge problem. There's already a Parkers, a Friendly's, et cetera, and not to mention the new Buc-E's that's coming to 95. So, so that would be some of my concern. And, you know, Chancellor's just a small road, and with the new units going down there, there would be increased traffic, and it's already a well-used little road. And then the buffer as well, particularly because it would bump right up next to our property. And we've already had people that feel they can have access to our property by with four-wheelers and everything else. So just, would you like for you to keep that in consideration?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
I'm Colin Cordell, that's my wife. It sounds like if, if you do this, this would be the final, he would, the company would be able to put anything they want there. I mean, they got, it's zoned for everything, commercial, residential, three, three-story high, four-story high. They're not given a definite plan of what they're doing. You know, in my opinion, they've getting it zoned for anything they want to. Commercial or residential. I mean, they got, on the same, I guess you all call them PDs or whatever you're calling them, but the same one gives them to build anything, in my opinion, from what, so, in other words, is this going to be the, if it's approved tonight, would this, I mean, would they be able to change it and just build? I mean, they haven't given us what they're going to do. To my opinion, they've just, they might build the convenience, utilities, buildings, they're allowed to build, office buildings, utility buildings, row houses, three-story apartment buildings, or all of them. So that's, that's my concern, that they need to specify what they're going to do and how they're going to control the traffic. Because then people on Old Jessup ain't got no problem like they're going to have out there if they put these houses in, the train, and all the Autumn, Autumn's Wood. There's apartments going up, there's more building out there than I think anywhere in Glen County, to be honest. And it's a two-lane, 99 supports it all. And we would be trapped on Chancellor Road if the train's there, the traffic's backed up with these extra hundred, thousand of people when Autumn Wood gets all rented out, they've built over 100 houses there already. And when all that's, we would be trapped. We probably might could get out, but we couldn't get back in, period. If it's blocked, if the train's blocked, it's backed up to spur, you can't, you'd have to go down the wrong side of the road to get, get to your house. Which, you know, you can't do that. That's all, that's all of my concerns.
No ma'am, no ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Hightower, would you like to come back and address these issues?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Jake Hightower again for Robert Civil Engineering. There was a lot of questions about the railroad. So in the original PD text, there was a dedication of extra right-of-way because there were discussions of actually having an overpass over this railroad. If that comes to fruition, the developer still, I mean, we had the option to strike that, but we kept that in there to where we said, yes, if there's going to be an overpass, they're, they're, they're planning on already leaving that right-of-way reserved for if the, if GDOT does decide to put that in there. They'll already have that land. So yes, sir, Mr. Cordell was right. Taking a right turn out of there, they can get out. If it, traffic backs up, then, then hopefully that overpass will come. And the way to make that overpass come is future development. That's the way that we increase our roads, our infrastructure, is by increasing the number of residents, the tax dollars, and then GDOT can put that in. And that's already part of this process where we're already planning future-wide, uh, future, future forward to leave that as part of the plan. And in terms of the buffers, we're going to go by the Glen County buffers, which would be the opaque fence. There would certainly take out any sort of people using this property improperly with four-wheelers or whatever the case may be. It would actually basically be a development to where all that would go away. This is wooded right now, this is clear. But again, we abide by all the county buffers. A lot of it was, again, they also asked about the next process as well. So just for Mr. Cordell's knowledge, this will then go to the Board of Commissioners if voted on tonight. I think we're on the agenda for the 19th, so they would have a chance to speak on that again. But then if we were to do either a commercial site, we would have a site plan process to make sure all the buffers are in place. We'd still go by all the rules and regulations and ordinances within Glen County. And if it's a residence, it'd be a plating process, again, with the buffers, everything else, whatever's required in order to get that. So there's still multiple checkpoints. This is really just kind of the first phase in which we're trying to amend the PD text and then go from there. Any other questions?
They, someone addressed having four stories, and there will not be four stories, is that correct?
The way the PD text reads now within the MR is, I want to say it's 35 feet. 35 feet for MR, yeah. So, so that's, you can only get three stories from that, you can't get four stories.
Mr. Hightower, just so I understand, on this side of the green, there's a fat white area. What, what is that indicating on this map? I mean, it kind of looks like a road, but...
It does, but again, I don't know if I can really take any of this. We can't take really much of this with a grain of salt. This is, this is not a survey. So that's, so I don't know what they're putting there, to be honest.
That's the original PD?
The original PD, that's correct.
So you just have a picture of what it was supposed to be?
Of what it was back in the day. One second, let me read, it's, I was trying to see. There was, I believe, back in the day, maybe even before the railroad, some sort of an old road, but then when they realigned 99, from the closing attorneys, because they did close on this property, there was some title issues, but they have resolved that. So basically, they realigned 99 when they expanded it, and now they're talking about doing an overpass whenever they, whenever they put the, the new highway in. So maybe that's what they're talking about, but that's no longer there. Titles all been cleared to go forward.
Any other questions?
Have you heard from, just pulling this up, any of the Herndon family that backs up directly to where the taller structures could possibly be?
No ma'am, I haven't. But the county staff, I've told them for every rezoning, if anybody has any questions, to give out my office number and my email. I had one fellow reach out from the Brunswick News. Actually, I'm sorry, that was for Royal Woods, I apologize, that wasn't for this one.
Mr. Hightower, in the, in the staff report, it says that billboards are permitted in the HC zoning, and they're permitted in both the current and the revised version of the PD. I know there was some discussion earlier today about striking that. Is that still something that your clients are willing to do?
So billboards are good business, they make a lot of money. I mean, we have them along 95. We did a rezoning here recently where that was part of it, and they were able to get some billboards. Since that came up in the, in the, in the county staff report, I did ask the developers, is this something you're willing to waver on? If that's something that would, you know, be seen as favorable to the commission or to the neighbors, then he's willing to take that out as well. But that is something, again, I've seen some of the numbers on billboards, and, and they do pretty darn well.
But you are willing for us to remove that?
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions? Ms. Thompson, you have something you want to add?
Yes ma'am, I just wanted to follow up on the buffer question. There was one question, if there's any county easement or right-of-way, where does that buffer work from? All buffers go from the developer's property line into their development. So if there is any kind of county easement or county right-of-way, that can't be part of the buffer, so it would be on the developer's property.
I do have a question, and this is going to test your memory. On the multifamily, the PD text for Coastal Pines, I know it was proposed to be 16 units per acre. Do you recall if that's what was approved by the county commission?
That was not approved.
Okay. Was, did they completely not, I don't, I don't recall, sorry, not approve, or did they reduce the density?
They reduced, I believe, to 12, but if you, if there's any question about density and you want to make it the same as that development, I believe I would ask for that wording, and then I could go, I'm looking at Ms. Claire for our attorney advice, but if you want to do something similar to that recommendation of what the board approved, if you could just say the same as that development, and I could go back and get that to make sure it's exact and not different. sure it's exact and not different.
So on the Coastal Pines property, um, I know that the developer was looking for 16 units per acre, and that happened immediately after the, for no better word, the movie project on 17, they reduced that, but do y'all remember at Coastal Pines? Did they, did they reduce it to 10?
That, that is, I, my memory serves that it was 10, and at that time, he said that that was not feasible.
Right.
Let me tell you what's gonna happen, but if we keep limiting these developments to 10 units per acre, they're not gonna be built, they cannot do financially. You can't make, if you build a, a development like this, you cannot make it work on 10 units per acre. You have to have 16 units per acre, and you have to look at the big picture. We have a terrible need for housing of this nature, that's the reason why every developer is trying to do this, because there is a need for this.
And we, if the county says the developer can have 16 units per acre, we should give them 16 units per acre.
I brought that up 'cause I thought they approved 16 units per acre. Actually, on the Coastal, um, Pines, we did, they, we approved 16 on both, I thought, and they reduced it on the Highway 17. I think Coastal Pines, it, I mean, I could be wrong, but I thought it was approved at 16 units per acre.
So I'm gonna say, I don't recall the series of events, but I can tell you that the owner is developing at, at the original density that was allowed. So I don't remember if he withdrew his request or what happened, but, um, we were told that it was a matter of a profit margin, and they went with what they were already allowed.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to speak real fast to the density, that the 16 units per acre is in line with the Glen County ordinances for medium residential, which is what this was originally approved for. Um, but then the high residential is 35 units per acre, but just that we're, we're still falling in line with them with the Glen County established, uh, zoning density is, as it states today.
Commissioners, uh, what's your pleasure?
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to accept ZM 5012 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I didn't see that, so, did, did everybody vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
You gotta be quicker.
(laugh) They're gonna be quicker. So the motion passes, uh, that would be ZM 5012, uh, passes. And our meeting is adjourned.